Good evening and welcome to Monday, to the Monday, July 26, 2021 special school board meeting for the Millkirk Township School District Board of Directors. We will meet, meeting this evening in the Little Theatre at MIHS, Millkirk Intermediate High School. We welcome the public that has joined us this evening in person and as a reminder for those who were not able to, we want them, to let them know that this meeting will be streaming live on YouTube You can also view this meeting's agenda as well as past meeting minutes. In addition to several informational items on our website, www.mtsd.org. Finally, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District, which has new posts added on a regular ongoing basis. Thank you. I may have a roll call, Mr. Sitter.
Mr. Busco.
Here.
Ms. Capabianca.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Mr. DePlacido.
Here.
Dr. Lansbury.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Ms. McClintock.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Roberts.
Here.
And Attorney Senate.
Here.
Thank you. 1.02, executive session announcement. An executive session was held July 26, 2021 for the purpose of personnel safety. Now, Louis Elioda, Michael Cabalca, ongoing litigation against Mill Creek Township School District. 1.03, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion, Janine.
Second, John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Against, nay? Motion passes. 1.04, please all stand for the pledge allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Thank you. Next thing is 1.05, the pandemic presentation. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, President Winchell. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see everyone in the audience today. Tonight, we have the honor of having our pandemic team and coordinator, supported by, we have our assistant principal, assistant superintendent as needed, and certainly one of our parents, community partners, and public health official, Dr. Lewis. Thank you for being here, and I will yield the floor to you all.
Good evening. I'm Crystal Krasnick. I've been a registered nurse over 10 years and I have a master's in health administration.
Good evening, everyone. Gus Jonathan Lewis, infectious disease chairman of infectious disease at UPMC Hamlet for the past five years. I've been an infectious disease physician for at least 10 years.
So, our goal this year is five-day in-person learning. Students benefit from in-person learning and safely returning to in-person learning. Five days a week this fall is our priority. During this presentation, we will review evidence-based research and data surrounding the success of our in-person learning model and ways that we can prevent disruption to our in-person learning. Consistent instructional in-person delivery model is one of our critical successes to our students. In-person support for students with SEL needs, social, emotional well-being, and support for students, and fewer distractions in-person for students. The CDC defines a cluster as the initial index case plus two or more linked cases, which requires investigation to enable development and implementation of infection prevention and control measures to disrupt, disrupt transmission of the disease, including but not limited to internet and building closures. Additionally, adding layers of mitigation efforts back, which may have been removed, such as masking. The local department of health has the authority to enforce a school building closure if a cluster has been identified within the schools to prevent additional spread of COVID-19. Any chance of a cluster from happening. While we can't predict the future, we do know last year while in building four days, we did not have one linked case amongst students in the classroom, which we credit the masking towards, as well as distancing and dust shields. Isolation and quarantine help protect the public by preventing exposure to people who have or may have a contagious disease. Federal isolation and quarantine are authorized by executive order of the president for communicable diseases. This includes but is not limited to COVID-19. Isolation and quarantine are not optional. Here you will see a scenario for a positive case while in school if we are to be unmasked. As you can see in this scenario, if a close contact is unmasked, that student will require a 10-day quarantine. Additionally, we know that there is a higher chance of COVID-19 spreading when individuals are unmasked, so this scenario could lead to the potential cluster and in turn potentially interrupting our five-day in-person learning. With social distancing implementations at MTSD, we would not require quarantine when masking is implemented appropriately. While we successfully did not identify any classroom transmission with 4,132 quarantines last year, it has still greatly impacted the social, emotional well-being of students, staffs, and the burden to our working families, whose children cannot virtually learn independently. In this scenario, because students would be masked, the likelihood of a building closure due to a cluster is much lower, and students would not require a halt to their in-person learning schedule as a result of a quarantine. Community spread-based model allows us to monitor and make decisions based on facts and data. It allows us to keep parents, students, and staff informed with expectations for each step during community and potential building-based spread. The goal is to provide expectations to our parents, students, and staff members for the instructional delivery model, not just for when we return on the first day, but also come this winter. By structuring our learning on the CDC's community-defined spread levels, we can best keep our students, staff, and staff safe in building.
Thank you, Crystal. So, basically what we're looking here now is a map of the US based on zip, I'm sorry, counties, county data. Oops, I hit the wrong one. What we're looking at for Erie, just as a later point around it, country, yeah. So, basically up here, right now, we're in the moderate zone. So, our numbers are going up, albeit nowhere where we were at about a year ago, but our numbers are definitely on the rise. It's going down.
If they press the map, right over.
Yeah. So, basically on the map, short version, blue good, red bad. There are definitely areas in the country that are much worse than we are, but the point is that we are going in the wrong direction, albeit the numbers are still low locally, but they are going up as I said. How would I do the next slide?
Let's go back and go all the way to the end.
Here.
Is it scroll? I can't tell. Are you scrolling or someone else? No, I want this to finish. There we go. Yep, thank you. It's almost done.
All right. Wow. Wow. What do I do to get the next slide?
Okay, now you can switch back. Thank you.
All right. So, basically, very recently, just within the past couple weeks, the American College of Pediatricians and the Children's Hospital Association, tallied all the case reports in children. All this data that I'm presenting is in children, not adults. And what we're seeing so far throughout this pandemic, we've had about 4.1 million pediatric cases of COVID-19. That represents about 14.2% of all cases in the United States. What we're seeing, what's more concerning, is within the past month, the past two data point periods, they have seen increasing rates in children. Looking locally, as I said, the national average was 14.2%. Locally in Pennsylvania, we have 14.8% of our cases are children under the age of 18. Now, percents, you can always change those numbers depending on what your numerator and the denominator are, but the level of the playing field, looking at it in a rate per 10,000, excuse me, per 100,000 children, the national average is about 5,500. Looking at Pennsylvania, we have about 1,000 more than that. We have about 6,500 pediatric cases per 100,000 children. Looking at that graphically, once again, as I said, back in December and January, the numbers were horrible. We all know that. They have gone down significantly, but however, looking within the past month, right here, what we're seeing is an increase in the number of cases in children, new cases in children. In the past month throughout the US, these numbers have gone up approximately threefold with active new cases. People still like to compare COVID to flu. It is not, absolutely not at all. This is looking at hospitalized children comparing COVID from the flu season of 17, 18, 18, 19, and 19 and 20. There's absolutely no comparison between the two. We double the rates of children are being admitted to hospitals, including ICUs, putting on breathing tubes, on breathing machines. This is not the flu at all. The next biggest thing that people are talking about are variants of concerns. These are mutations in the baseline, the naive native virus. And what we're seeing, the one that's in the news now, the Delta strain, Delta virus, it is much more contagious in adults and children. This is shown proven science. Back in July 3, approximately 50% of all new cases were typed out as Delta strain. Not even a month later, that number is up to almost 85% of new cases are Delta virus. As I said, it infects both the children's and adults much easier. It's more infectious, and there's less protection from the vaccine in our own natural host response. The data on the vaccine is very mixed. The published data that is out there says that against naive virus, the RNA vaccines are 95% effective. Compared to Delta virus, they're staying upper 80s, low 90s. However, there is a report out of Rutgers from Singapore, looking at 1,000, almost 1,100 new cases within the past month. Of those 1,100, 75% have been vaccinated. This is the problem with non-peer-reviewed references. I have no idea what that 75% means. That's why we need peer review, good data. We can't get our data off of unrevealed sources and social media platforms such as Facebook. Looking at a peer-reviewed, this is MMR out of the CDC, looking at an outbreak, a Delta virus that occurred earlier this year in Oklahoma at a gymnastics facility. Basically, there were 100, almost 200 exposures of those 250, almost 50 developed COVID. Median age was about 14. Most of those, most of those pauses were due to children that were not able to be vaccinated because they were too young. Still with that, approximately 7, 10% about, that were vaccinated did become positive. Not 75, as noted in the Singapore study, but still 10% is a significant number. Recently, the American Academy of Pediatrician, Pediatrics came out with recommendations for this coming school year, and what they say is all students older than two years of age and all school staff should wear face masks, should wear face masks at school unless medically or developmental conditions prohibit use. Why are they saying this? Because a significant portion of students will not be able to be vaccinated because of age. Also, universal masking will protect unvaccinated students as well as their families. There's not a good, there's a lack of a system to track vaccination. This will help people protect their personal healthcare identification or information. The schools will not need to know if people have been vaccinated or not. It's difficult to monitor who has and who has not been vaccinated. How do you make non-vaccinated people mask without knowing their vaccination status? The possibility of low vaccination rates in surrounding communities, this is a big player in sports. If you want to play sports, you're going to be playing out-of-town teams. You don't know what their vaccination record, records are. You don't know who's sick or who's not going to be sick in the next day. There's always concern about more variants, and also, forget COVID, this affects, well, masking will help prevent flu and RSV. Yes, there are much more hospitalizations with COVID compared to flu and RSV. However, comparatively, flu and RSV are much more lethal than COVID. This will help protect students and faculty from that as well. Concerns about vaccination exist. Primarily, what's out now is myocarditis, particularly, we're seeing this in younger male individuals comparative with the female. Looking at modeling information based on administration of 100 vax, oh, excuse me, 1 million vaccine doses, you're estimated to have 40 to 50 cases of myocarditis. However, you're also preventing over 11,000 cases of COVID. This one. So, my desire is to keep students in classes. We all know the problems with that. This is looking at suicide rates in adolescents aged 12 to 11. This is only in females because that's where the biggest influence or impact is in what we're seeing. Compared to 2020, compared to 2019, there was a 30% increase in ER visits for attempted suicides in young adolescent female. They haven't even done the analysis for 2020, the black solid line at the top, but you can see it's much higher than the 30% just from last year. Kids need to be in school. Finally, this is old data, but we know it's true. Masking works. Masking decreases people's risk of developing COVID-19 by 80%, 85% masking alone.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic. Vaccinations can help schools safely return to in-person learning, as well as extracurricular activities and sports. Low vaccine uptake and/or ineligibility of populations to get vaccinated along with removal of masking has been linked to increased spread of COVID-19, a concern for being able to keep in-person learning. Currently, in Erie, 12- to 19-year-olds are at 26.9% fully vaccinated, while 11 and under remain ineligible to be vaccinated. On the right, you will see that the monthly vaccination administration rates have rapidly and continually declined, leaving Erie an overall vaccination of 52.3% for all age groups for the PA Department of Health. Proposing a model that can meet the needs of all stakeholders while protecting in-person learning along with the health and safety of MTSD. Our model would include five days in-person instruction with minimum of three-foot distancing at all community levels. The only mitigation effort that would be able to be adjusted is the masking requirement within the school based on our community level of spread. Considering recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatricians and the Centers for Disease Control, along with evidence that shows when community rates of COVID-19 are high, there is an increased likelihood that COVID-19 will be introduced to and potentially transmitted in school. It is important we proactively plan ahead with a community-based level of spread model while data shows increasing cases of a variant more transmissible across the United States. Again, the goal is to not have a cluster within the school building, and we are using the data that we have available from public health experts and our own school's data last year. At the high and substantial levels, where a positive case is more likely than that of low and moderate, this model would then allow students to avoid quarantines and continue to receive the benefits of in-person learning has to offer. So, for example, if it's November and Erie is classified as high spread county by the Department of Health, then universal masking wearing would be adopted, and any identified close contacts would not need to quarantine and miss school if they were wearing a mask in the classroom. If then in February, we go back to lower moderate transmission, we would revert back to parent choice or masking. Again, the goal is to remain in five days in-person learning without intermittent building closures or spread of COVID-19. COVID-19 outbreaks have occurred in the school settings. Multiple studies have shown that transmission rates within school settings are lower when multiple prevention strategies are in place. CDC continues to recommend masking and physical distancing as key prevention strategies. Based on the goal of five days in-person learning, the CDC suggests school administrators consider universally requiring masking regardless of vaccination status when. The district has a large student population that is not yet eligible for vaccines, increasing or substantial or high COVID-19 transmission within the school or within their surrounding county. county. Increasing community transmission of a variant that is spread more easily among children and adolescents or is resulting in more severe illness. Lacking a system to monitor the vaccine status of students and staff. If Erie were to be in higher substantial, MTSD would meet that criteria based on the If we reached a point in which universal masking was considered again, it would look a lot different than last year in that the guidance has changed. Updates from the CDC regarding masking have included in general that people do not need to wear a mask while outdoors regardless of vaccination status. Participating in outdoor play, they do not need to wear the mask, recess and during physical education activities. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our presentation. I kindly ask you to please visit any of the following credited websites to review evidence-based research, facts, and data when making the decision about student and staff health and safety.
Thank you, Chris Olney and Dr. Lewis. Now we go into the visitor section, two point zero one, visitors formal and informal request to adjust the board. Board, looking for approval, looking for a motion to approve and extending our visitor speaking beyond our allocated thirty minutes per policy nine oh three for public participation to one hour at this meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to extend the visitor speaking a lot of time from thirty minutes to one hour.
I'll make a motion.
Second theme, any discussion? I just would like to, before we vote to extend the visitor comments section from thirty minutes to sixty minutes, I think it would be prudent to review a few guidelines. We have many speakers who would like to speak this evening, many pre-register for five minutes, others who didn't pre-register, and will be allocated three minutes. May I ask all speakers to, upon reaching the podium, please state your name and address. Please leave your remarks to, with five or three minutes allotted. If you do not need the entire five or three minutes, please conclude your remarks early. So other speakers who do not pre-register will have a chance to address the administration and the board as well. I ask all in attendance to use reasonable and respectful decorum, and I ask all of the speakers and audience to be respectful and refrain from abusive, threatening, or condescending language. Please address the board and the administration in its entirety without singling out any specific individual or individuals. At the conclusion of the sixty minutes, I would ask if there are any other speakers that would like to address the board administration on any other topics that were not discussed in the previous hour. If there are, we will consider another extension of time. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. Mrs. Sitter, who's our first speaker for this evening?
Our first speaker is Adam Gorniak. Come right up to the podium.
Okay, Adam, you have five minutes, and we'll start after you introduce yourself and provide your address.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this time to address some concerns from a parent. My name's Adam Gorniak. I live on twenty-one forty Wager Road. This year, I have three children going to Bell Valley. I have a, well, I have a fifth grader, a third grader, and a kindergarten. And so I got some concerns here when it comes to this coming up school year, but first I want to say how great, Mill Creek really did a great job last year when it comes to, what a task we guys had addressed last year. The uncertainty of COVID, what to do, what a big task that was, didn't have any statistics to go off of. So you guys did a great job last year. I'll give you, give you that. But now we have some numbers. Now there's some statistics go off of for this year. And some stuff that was already addressed, some of it was discussed, but not in full detail. Actually printed out the exact same report that was already discussed a little bit just a couple minutes ago. You go through some of these concerns when it comes to COVID with our children. According to American Academy of Pediatrics, some of the stuff, I was going to make some more points, but you already addressed them, so thank you for doing that. That's already done. But I think the biggest thing we have to consider, consider masking and unmasking for our children is not just the positive cases. My wife and I had it. My kids had a cough, so I didn't test them. They, they got over in a couple of days, whatever it was. So we all, most of my family went through COVID. But the thing we have to worry about when it comes to COVID, I think, is the more the mortality rate than the positive rate when it comes to our children. You go through the, if you go through the mortality rate, right here, it says here on whatever page this is, on the same, you discussed, point zero one percent of children cases resulted in death. That's of the cases, not of all of our children. That's ninety-nine point nine nine percent survival rate of children will, will, will live if they get COVID. And of that point zero one percent, most of those children, unfortunately, had leukemia, had other diseases that are already compromised. So when it comes to a parent, I don't think we need to be putting fear in our children come to school this coming up year. We don't need masks this year. I agreed with it last year. I agreed with it last year because we didn't know what we were getting into. You guys did a great job. I saw my middle, my middle child, Nathan, I saw him drop in his reading skills when he was all cyber school. I saw it. We spent so much time with him. He's a lot like me. I couldn't, I was in a program before with sitting at a desk with this curriculum in front of me, not in front of a teacher, but then when I went to public school, I had a teacher in front of me, man, I just, I thrived. I took every hard course I could take. I went to college, did all these things that I couldn't do with the other curriculum I was using. My middle son needs that. As soon as he went back to school, second half of last year, it came back so quick. He needs that interaction with the teacher in front of the class. And we all, we all know that. That's a fact. But this coming up school year, my little Sarah, kindergarten, comes to school, she will not come to school with a mask. I'm not going to let that happen. And if, and if she does have to, if you say she has come to the school with a mask, don't just say, well, we believe, we believe, we believe. We need numbers and facts for our children while we have, if you're saying we need to wear masks. You might have already made up your mind. This might, this whole conversation might be worth nothing. I don't know. You might have already made up your mind. But right now, if our children have to wear masks, if you say so, I'll totally disagree with you because none of these statistics show that. This is not my bias, not my opinion. These are numbers, facts for our children. So when it comes to our children this coming up school year, masks should not even be an option right now, even where we're at right now, not at all. Because ninety-nine point nine nine percent survival rate, if they get it, I think there should still be an option if a child is compromised, if the parents choose, if they want to stay home and do cyber, fine. You guys are worried about COVID. I get that. And our children also should be taught, if a parent decides, if they see another kid in their class wearing a mask, we should teach our children, don't judge them, don't mean me to them. That's between them and their parents. That's their decision. That's the freedom of this country. If they want to wear it, let them wear it. If they don't, they shouldn't. And that is what, I'm not going to put fear in my children. We need to do things, okay, we're done.
Mr. Gorniak, five minutes.
Okay. We do things off of facts, not off of opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Gorniak.
Henry Aldretti is the next person on the list.
You have five minutes, Mr. Aldretti.
Thanks for having me. My name's Henry Aldretti. I'm at twenty-two thirty-five Brooksboro Drive, and I'm a married father of four, four kids. One of my children attends school in Mill Creek School District. I'm speaking here today because I'm deeply disturbed by the plans to mask our kids in school again this upcoming school year. My findings raise significant concerns, both medically and legally, of the current mask policy in place. Masks are ineffective for the purpose claimed by the mandate, potentially harmful, and they are only authorized for use by an emergency use authorization. Furthermore, masks are ineffective. Just read the small print on a box of masks. You really don't have to go much further than that. It's really that simple. Just read the damn box. That's it. However, if that's not enough evidence for you, let me help you better understand some other facts in regards to masks. A single viron of SARS-CoV-2 is about sixty to one hundred and forty nanometers or point one microns. The pore size in a surgical mask is two hundred to one thousand times the size of that, up to one thousand times. Mr. Roberts, you're a pretty big guy. Imagine if you were one thousand times bigger. Imagine that. You might not even fit in here. That's the difference between a mask and a virus. And sir, I heard you speak today, you should know that. That's like throwing sand in a chain link fence. Now, if that is a fact, tell me, am I lying? Or are you guys? There have been hundreds of mass studies related to influenza transmission done over the last several decades. It is well established, a well-established fact, that masks do not stop viruses. Part of that evidence shows that cloth masks actually increase influenza-linked illness. Bacteria are fifty times larger than virus particles. Did you know that? While virus particles can easily pass through a mask, guess what bacteria does? It attaches to the mask. And you, as an Olympic athlete, should know that. That, that leaves us, that leaves us, by being exposed all day, our children. Now tell me, Mr. Senate, is that also a fact?
Mr. Aldretti, can I interrupt you for a second?
If we can pause you. If we can pause, can we pause my time?
Yeah, two to five.
Thank you.
We would ask you not to...
No, go ahead. Let, let Mr. Senate talk, please. Thank you.
Could you not address individual people and address the board as a whole?
Why not?
Because that's what we're asking you to do.
Yeah, but with all due respect, sir.
You can go. With the... I've asked, I made your, my request, please.
Okay.
Honor our request.
So, Mr. Senate, thank you. If that's a fact, then who exactly are you representing? If I was on the Board of Superintendents of the district, I would be demanding Knox Law Firm immediately be fired for putting your clients, these good people here, okay, that I know. Lisa, you know me. You go way back with my family. And I'd be demanding, actually, more information in reference to actually what we've researched. You should do that, Mr. Senate. So with that said, if what I just shared is a fact, your law firm is literally putting the entire, all these great people here, their careers at risk. Getting fired from any job is never an easy thing to swallow for anyone, but most professionals simply move on and seek other opportunities. Just look at Dan Roberts. He's moved on for many districts.
Mr. Aldretti, we've asked you, please do not call out individuals on the board of the administration. It is policy, it's our public policy.
Can I just ask this?
No individual names to be mentioned.
What is the problem though with that?
It's our policy.
I'm not being condescending.
That was a political, a personal attack on Dr. Roberts.
No, it's not. Mr. Roberts, have you, have you not?
And this is not a question answered, period.
I didn't say anything bad about where he moved from.
Please honor the rules here. If you're not going to honor the rules, we're going to end your time.
Is there a list of the rules?
Yes, it's our, it's on our policy.
It's on the public policy.
Under nine point zero zero.
Under public participation.
Yes.
Please honor...
We're not allowed to address anybody on the board.
You're not allowed to attack anyone on the board, which you've done.
We're a board of nine, not individual boards.
Please continue and honor our rules.
All right, so you have two minutes left. So with that said, these masks and vaccines are truly more dangerous than what all of you once thought. What's that mean when parents like me stop talking to you in a setting like this and actually come after your careers for potentially harming our children? One last fact, all of you may have not known before today, but this is related to the nineteen eighteen nineteen nineteen influenza pandemic, the Spanish flu. Did you know there was almost universal agreement among experts that deaths were virtually never caused by the Spanish flu virus, but resulted directly from severe secondary pneumonia caused by well-known bacterial pneumopathogens? Dr. Fauci actually did that study at the National Institute of Health, and they helped him in study pandemics and epidemics. The vast majority of the influenza deaths resulted from secondary bacterial pneumonia. You should really look that up. Now, if that is also a fact, what does that mean for your careers moving forward if you make a decision to actually implement policies based on third-party guidance and recommendations? Maybe, sir, maybe you can answer that question for me. If I were you, I would be very concerned that the man who legally represents all of you doesn't know these facts himself, because if he did, no lawyer in their right mind or law firm would be advising you to move forward with some of the policies that parents like myself are speaking about today. It took me almost three, four months back in early twenty twenty when my place of employment was shut down for me to find the truth regards to the entire pandemic. I don't think you folks are really bad people. I really don't. You may take my words as an attack today. Like, I believe you care about our kids and our students and our staff. Like the gentleman said earlier, you guys were put up in a difficult situation last year, okay? But it is your responsibility to dig into this the same way we did. Third-party guidance is exactly that. That's why people get second opinions from doctors when they have surgery. So with that said, that's what I'm asking you to do. Dig into this. Don't just go off of one publication. Do us all a favor and just essentially do your job.
Sorry, Joe, your five minutes is up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just like to, just like to remind everyone in attendance to use reasonable and respectful decorum. And we have a lot of speakers, we have a lot of interruptions, it's just going to eliminate perhaps some of the speakers in the back end from having their five minutes. Next speaker. Troy, you have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Troy Prozan. I live at twenty-eight sixty-two West Thirty-third. Since when did educators become tyrants? Since when did school board members and superintendents start playing medical doctors? Since when do you have the right to push vaccines on our children, especially ones that are researched trial? The last sixteen months, you have seen our children as dollar signs instead of human life. You've sheltered them, abused them, oppressed them, and failed to give them a proper education, which to me is low. I must ask, can we stick you in a mask all day and keep you from making friends, seeing someone smile, maybe frustrate you when you can't learn properly because a teacher's voice is muffled? I probably isolate you during lunch. I have a better idea. Let's stick you in a mask outside in the heat and see how long you last. That's why I'm here today. Today is the day we end this. Today is the day we show you that you are out of control of our children's health, we the parents are. We know that none of you are qualified to make medical decisions for our children. And what really comes in the question is, are you called enough, qualified enough to make sure they have a proper education? We don't need to show you data or facts. That should not be a burden on us. However, after doing some research, making calls, we come to the conclusion that there is zero evidence or data backing up masking children all day, isolating them, testing them, and keeping them from an education and even making friends. My daughter graduated from McDowell this year. I tried to get her to come this evening to speak to you about what it felt like to be masked, be stripped of everything, including what should have been a fun senior year. She declined and said, Dad, I hated it there. I'm happy to be gone. And don't ever want to go back. How could I argue that? Mr. Roberts spoke of what their dash would say during a speech. You know what your dash would say? We failed the Mill Creek District, the students, and all the families. We didn't have a plan and it showed. Our hybrid learning was poor, and the in-person learning was even worse. And I would like to conclude with the following question. Do you have a problem with white supremacists running around at the kindergarten level? First grade, third grade, sixth? I'm asking because one of you claims systematic racism and white supremacy are prevalent in the K through twelve education, and we, as parents, need to know if this is true. I don't want this being... I don't want this being infiltrated into our school and poisoning our young children's minds. My son, who was in kindergarten this past year, is going into first. He's a fun, loving little boy. He wants to help everyone and be everyone's friend. And I have a hard time seeing him feel like he's above anyone else. I believe that statement from one of you is a baseless claim, and it needs to be shut down immediately. Start teaching, start being an education center, start doing your job, start respecting the parents and students, and leave your opinions, especially your political ones, at the door.
Thank you, Mr. Prozan. Is DiLoreto you have five minutes?
Hi. Hi, my name is Jessica DiLoreto, and I live at 1215 Oregon Avenue. I'm here again today to ask the board to please send the kids back to school with the parental option of masks. I understand there are parents that want their children to wear masks, but there are also many parents that feel very differently. I ask that you give that option because, as parents, we know what is best for our children. Masking is not an option for my child. We withdrew him last year because he did not do well in a mask. I would pick him up and his mask was soaked, and he developed the rash around his mask, around his mouth from the mask. Prior to this year, he loved school, kindergartner, pre-K, loved school. But this past year, he would fight us and even cry because he didn't want to go and have to wear a mask, sit behind a shield, learn from an iPad. Didn't want to do that. Why are we not concerned about the psychological damage this is doing to our children? He will be going into first grade, and I pray the psychological effects this past year has had on him will go away, and he will return to loving school and looking forward to going. My hope is to return him to the school district, but will only if masks are optional for all kids. Many families don't have the option, as we did, to keep their kids home, so I am asking, as a district, to make masks optional. There are currently one hundred and eighteen school districts out of five hundred in Pennsylvania that have school boards that voted to make masking optional for the upcoming school year. I haven't, I will send you that list in email. And then, on June 10th, the FDA has recalled many lots of the COVID rapid qualitative tests. The recall is because the test includes performance claims that did not accurately reflect the performance estimates observed during the clinical studies of the tests, which present a risk of false positive. How many of those positive cases should have been negative cases and are actually not COVID? Then, on July 21st of 2021, the CDC said their PCR test should no longer be used to test COVID after December 31st of 2021. The website states, "The CDC encourages laboratories to consider adoption of multiplex method that can facilitate detection and differentiation of COVID and influenza viruses." Does this mean their PCR test was positive if it was a flu or COVID, and these cases were being counted as COVID cases? How many of those cases could have been flu positives? Also, what about the natural immunity created by the body from having COVID? In the Olympic Village, Japan has said one hundred percent of their citizens are covered from COVID because they have been vaccinated or are already immune. Why has natural immunity been ignored in the United States? I will also email you a copy of an antibody test, and I actually have copies here for you guys if you want. It's an actual antibody test that was performed by somebody that I know, or that was done for somebody that I know that shows that they have immunity from COVID due to having COVID previously. They have those antibodies, and this is a test that was months after they had COVID. Why is this being ignored in the United States? I can also email you a study about immunity, about natural immunity. I understand you guys are in a tough position lately, and I appreciate this meeting, but I want to make sure you are aware that while a health and safety plan is required to be eligible for ESER funds, they do not have to require masks. This was verified by Noah Tega, who, while being confirmed, is Secretary of the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Also, the CDC does not have jurisdiction over buses and therefore cannot include buses in the current masking order for public transportation. Statutes of Pennsylvania Title 23, Chapter 63 on Child Abuse. The term "child abuse" shall mean intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly doing any of the following, which includes interfering with the breathing of a child. Masks definitely interfere with the breathing of children. Under this definition, masking children is child abuse. Finally, I noticed two, I noticed new textbooks are on the agenda. Where is the content posted for these textbooks and who is the publisher, so parents can research what is included in these textbooks? The timing of new textbooks and the push to get critical race theory and certain sexual education topics in the schools is quite concerning. Where do each of you stand on these topics? I have another handout for you. This is a petition that went on Mill Creek School District. Three hundred and ninety-six people have signed the petition. It has not been out very long either. The list of names is attached, and the questionnaire out front is there, and I will email that to you as well. And finally, I ask that you give the judgment back to the parents because we know what is best for our children, to make masks optional for this upcoming school year, and also be more transparent on the content of textbooks the school district is looking at.
Mr. DiLoreto, your five minutes is up.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilmore, you have five minutes.
Kelly Gilmore, 6059 Estate Drive. I am here on behalf of my two children as their voices have been silenced this last year and a half. I made a promise to them on the last day of school that they would never wear a mask ever again. And I honestly cannot believe that we're still here talking about this. Have any of you actually ever asked the children what they prefer? You certainly haven't asked the parents what we prefer about masks or vaccines. These are our children, not yours. And above all else, these are children of God. We entrust them with you. We entrust them with you, and you have taken their voice away, the little voice that they had to begin with, smothering them behind a mask. No one asked the kids how they feel about masks, or about social distancing, or about the loss of normalcy in the last year and a half. The responsibility of COVID safety measures and a distorted narrative was never a weight for their tiny shoulders to carry. The psychological impacts of this time will be with them forever. I've been quite active sending the newest research to Dr. Roberts and to my children's principals. I've played along, and I've played very nice. For me, I have had enough when the comment was made at our last school board meeting by our superintendent, in quotes. I'm optimistic and hopeful that by September 1st, 2021, we will be in a very different space. We can welcome one hundred percent of our students who are vaccinated with their smile exposed as they come to learn. So if my child isn't vaccinated, he won't be welcome? Or his smile won't be welcomed because it will be hiding behind the mask that you force upon his face? This statement is what lit a fire under me. So I actually thank you for saying a statement like that so that parents and the board and students in the community really know where you stand. This is blatant and open discrimination against our children, a visible sign for everyone to see what private medical decisions parents made in their kids' best interest. I can't imagine, I can't imagine the levels of bullying this one site and continue to create further division between our kids, their teachers, and society in general. We, as parents, demand freedom of choice on all fronts. Freedom of choice prohibits federal, state, or local government from denying or interfering with a right to exercise choices or discriminating against the exercise of rights. Freedom of choice presents something more fundamental than power. It represents the right of the individual to be a free agent, to make his own decisions, to be free from arbitrary authority of others, and to be able to choose how he wishes to use his service or property rather than be subject to coercion by others. Freedom of choice means that this person is able to choose his course of action and his own pattern of living. As I wrote many letters this year, the same answer came back. We follow guidance from the CDC, PDE, and PA Department of Health. These are guidelines and recommendations and should not be made into a policy. The PA Department of Health Secretary Noah Tega has stated that the ESER funds will still be given to schools who do not follow the mandatory use of masking recommendation for the CDC. Furthermore, a team of researchers at John Hopkins University recently reported that when studying a group of forty-eight thousand children, they found zero deaths among healthy children. There are seventy-three million children under the age of eighteen in the U.S. that are suffering under these restrictive and oppressive conditions. The numbers do not lie and do not support such measures any longer. As parents and guardians, we possess sole and final authority over our children's medical decisions. We demand the freedom to choose what's best for our children, and we will. With a movement that's been spreading faster than wildfire, our group, Erie County Parents Protecting Children, has amassed a following that cannot be silenced any longer. The sleeping giant is awake. The silent majority is no longer silent. We stand together. We stand together, linking arms, and we won't back down. Silence has been suffocating. It's been dangerous. It's been paralyzing, and being silent means you're complicit and you approve of it. No more. Not one more mask on our kids, and not one more innocent voice heard as a whisper.
Rebecca Ladell.
About five minutes. We're about halfway through the hour. We've had five speakers. We still have seven to go on the agenda, so just ask everyone again. If you don't need the five minutes, please pass that on to the next speaker. You have five minutes, Ms. Ladell.
Thank you. My name is Becky Ladell. I am at 5716 Vicki Court. I would first like to commend the school board for revising the health and safety plan to better reflect the intentions of a larger proportion of Mill Creek parents. Thank you for being in receipt of my emailed intentions for the upcoming school year. I think everyone present and listening at home could use some good news. We're now getting so much real-time data about the efficacy of natural immunity against COVID. Two recent studies caught my attention recently, including one that's hot off the press. And in the spirit of saving some trees, I will email these links to the studies to you all after the meeting. But first, let's start with a study recently done by the Cleveland Clinic called, quote, "Necessity of COVID-19 Vaccination in Previously Infected Individuals," posted on June 5th. The purpose was to study the necessity of COVID-19 vaccination in persons previously infected with SARS-CoV-2, colloquially referred to as COVID throughout this speech. Employees of the Cleveland Clinic health system were included in the study, beginning on the day vaccination began, December 16, 2020. The study continued for five months. In summary, quote, "Cumulative incidence of COVID was examined among over fifty-two thousand employees at Cleveland Clinic." COVID did not occur in anyone over the five months of that study, among twenty-five-hundred-and-seventy-nine individuals previously infected with COVID, including the thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-nine who didn't take the vaccine. In other words, not one of those with only natural immunity had a COVID infection for the duration of the study, and these people worked in a high-risk environment. The conclusion states, quote, "Individuals who have COVID infection are unlikely to benefit from COVID-19 vaccination, and vaccines can be safely prioritized to those who have not been infected before." Another more even recent study by Emory University in Cell Reports Medicine published on July 14th titled, quote, "Longitudinal Analysis Showing Durable and Broad Immune Memory After COVID Infection with Persistent Antibody Responses in Memory B and T Cells." Sorry for the technical speak here. This is an ongoing study that will extend beyond two years, but currently has data over eight months from studying patients recovered from COVID, which shows durable and broad persistence of the three main types of cells in our immunity systems, described very loosely in the following Avengers analogy. I apologize in advance. First is the memory cells, which helps our bodies alert and remember the virus for an antibody response, which could be akin to Nick Fury, Agent Coulson, and their leadership for the espionage agency SHIELD. The cytotoxic cells, which kill the infected cells, so we often think of Hulk or Iron Man, but also Black Widow, Thor, or Hawkeye. And then we have helper cells, which help wake up and activate the memory in the cytotoxic cells, who are similar to Captain America's leadership. So results suggest that broad and effective immunity may persist long-term in recovered COVID patients. In the context of the health and safety plan, we can celebrate this good news. As of today, the death rate for children under twenty years of age in Pennsylvania from COVID-19 is still zero, even after fifteen months of the pandemic, even after Mill Creek brought children back into the classroom for a majority of the previous school year. This district has already participated in proving the safety of our schools for our children. In conclusion, I never thought that advocacy and activation on behalf of my children would involve my English major self trying to watch YouTube videos about simplified immunology on a Monday morning, but here we are. Thank you very much for your kind attention this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Ladell. You have five minutes, Ms. Kurczansky.
Hello. My name is Amy Kurczansky, and I'm here on behalf of my 10th grader and my 8th grader. My 10th grader was kept home last year and did a charter cyber school, and I will do the same for my 8th grader this year if I need to. I will not be sending her to school with a mask. Our children are being made to feel the world is dangerous and afraid of other people. While the masks serve no level of protection, scientific studies show that they lower O2 levels in the blood while raising carbon dioxide levels and actually trap exhaled viral pathogens, which increases the severity of viral load. They collect and colonize viruses and bacteria and are dangerous to those with asthma or respiratory issues. Our kids have been getting together outside of school and playing together as kids do while not wearing masks. My child even played hockey, a contact sport, the entire season last year without a mask and no major outbreaks of COVID-19. Then they come here and are forced to wear them. It serves no purpose. It doesn't protect them. It only harms them. None of this is based in logic or science. Even Dr. Fauci seems to be a little confused about the subject. The CDC's recommendations were originally for the unvaccinated students and staff to wear masks. We all know where that path leads. The mask can be cast aside if you get the shot. Many parents are not okay with subjecting their children to an experimental, non-FDA-approved pharmaceutical that is only being used under an emergency use authorization. This type of vaccine has never been proven safe. In fact, even in 2012, the animal trials had to be stopped due to all the animals dying. We are the study. And if you are not aware of theirs, the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System, I can tell you that as of July 16th, 2021, there are over four hundred and ninety thousand adverse events reported, and eleven thousand four hundred and five of those are deaths. The mRNA COVID shots now even carry a warning of heart inflammation, also known as myocarditis. That is something many of us are not willing to risk, and our children should never be discriminated against when it comes to these medical choices. COVID testing does not belong in schools. Medical processes should not take place in the school setting. PCR testing was not developed for and is not a reliable indicator of the presence of infectious disease. It is not evidence that a person is either unwell with any infection or infectious to others. Carrie B. Maulis, the inventor of the test, is quoted as saying, "PCR tests cannot detect free infectious viruses at all. I am not prepared to give my consent for my child to receive a wholly inappropriate and unreliable test, nor am I convinced it comes without risk." Sickness is nothing new, and it's certainly not going away. As a matter of fact, illness is how we strengthen our God-given immune system. Why is natural immunity being overlooked? Why is the shot the only answer? What about those who have contracted COVID-19 and now have natural immunity to it? We, as humans, are granted free will, and that includes what we do with our own bodies and what parents choose to do with their children's bodies. COVID-19 infection is both rare and low-risk to healthy children. So instead of pushing masks, shots, and testing, why don't schools focus more on teaching students how to support their immune system with healthy food choice? students how to support their immune system with healthy food choices and proper nutrients and positive emotional support? It's time to give back the power to the parents and allow them to make health and medical decisions that fit their needs without feeling sweaten for any reason for their choices. If they feel their child needs a mask, then by all means, they should have that choice. If they trust a non-FDA-approved pharmaceutical to be injected, then they should have that option. I am in full support of parents' choice when it comes to medical freedom, but do not force the hand of parents who feel it is not in the best interest of their children. It is not the children's job to keep you safe. That is your job. That is your responsibility. It's your job to provide them a quality education. You need to focus on providing quality education to our children, and we, the parents, will make whatever health decisions that are necessary on their behalf. Let's do what's best for our children and return our schools to normal. And I have a couple of handouts that I can pass out to you for theirs with the other things that I think you might find interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchansky.
Jennifer Kaller.
You have five minutes, Ms. Kaller.
My name is Jennifer Kaler, and I live at 1423 Wantodrive, Pennsylvania. First, I'd just like to say that so many parents have said so many beautiful things, and I am so grateful that all of you have the courage to be here today to stand up for our children, because if we don't, then when? Because sooner or later, they're going to take our rights away. The Holocaust is a real thing. Doctors have literally taken children and experimented on them, and people act like it didn't happen. I'm here today because I have a right as a citizen and a civilian, as a parent, to protect my child against other people and what they feel is best for my child. That is my right, not the school board, not the doctors, because I am a parent of a child with an adverse reaction, and not one shot fits all. I am here today telling you that my child is lucky to be alive because they had an adverse reaction to a vaccine. My child will not be masked, and it will not be muzzled for a political agenda no longer. My child has a right to breathe free oxygen and to expel carbon monoxide. It is a proven fact, and many parents have already said the statistics, and you guys already have the statistics, so I don't need to state them. I'm here to voice my voice for my child. It is time to take the mask away and give the rights and the power back to the parents, because we are their protectors, because God has given them to us and not to the people of the school board.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaler.
Robin Groner.
You have five minutes, Ms. Groner.
Hello. I'm Robin Groner at 3226 Patio Drive. My biggest fear is public speaking, but I'm doing this for my children. I am a mother of two beautiful kids. I'm not going to give them up. One is entering second grade. He did attend school last year, and my daughter is entering kindergarten. Because COVID was still fairly new last year, I was okay with sending my son to school with a mask and knowing and trusting his school to keep him safe. But now, with more time that has gone by for us to see and understand how and who COVID affects, our children's population is not affected like the elderly or those with autoimmune or obesity or diabetes. With the statistics, whether it's 99.88, 99.9, whatever the statistic is, why are the other, the 0.1 or 0.2% of children that have died with other issues? Why are the other 99.9 or 99.8% of children being forced to wear masks that have been proven ineffective? Myself, my husband, and my two kids both had COVID in January, all different symptoms. Both my kids have had worse symptoms from the cold. You would not have even known that they had COVID. Was, did wearing masks, I mean, I don't know how effective masks are, so I don't, I'm going to bypass that. I don't think kids wearing masks in school is going to help keep them from spreading it. We quarantined. We're responsible, as all parents are, but that's our choice and that's our right. For me, the psychological effects on my children is my biggest issue. My son's highlight last year in first grade was with going to school was seeing his friends, playing at recess, and learning new things from his amazing teacher, as we do have great teachers in Mill Creek. However, during that school year, there was a week's time when I noticed he was barely eating his lunch. I will, and believe me, that's not normal for him. I asked him about it, and he said he didn't want his friends to laugh and make fun of his red cheeks. Wonder where he gets that from? He just wanted to quickly put on his mask because his cheeks were red, and he didn't want his friends to make fun of him anymore. It sounds small and simple, but that broke my heart as a mother. The limited oxygen on his growing body can cause more than just flushed cheeks. Our kids' minds are being affected by being forced to wear masks in school. All parents have the right to decide what's best for their children's health and well-being. That is our right. I understand the board wanting to keep all kids in school safe. If a parent wants to send their child to school with a mask, that's their choice. If a parent wants them to not wear a mask, that should be their choice as well. My son, I asked him about two months ago how he wanted his second grade year to be different from his first grade year. He simply said, "I want to be able to see my friends and not wear a mask so that they can hear me and understand what I'm saying." You need to stop pushing the COVID vaccine on our kids. We don't enforce the flu vaccine. My kids will not get, they've never had the flu vaccine. We are God's creation. We have strong immune systems, and that's what I trust. Kids get sick, and that's part of life. We all get sick, but our immune systems are strong, and we're capable and able to fight COVID and any other virus that comes along for us. But forcing masks on these children, on our children, is ultimately going to cause discrimination against them, and I don't want my child, who is unvaccinated, to be forced to wear a mask and to be made fun of or feel that discrimination. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Groner.
Dr. Lewis.
Dr. Lewis, you have five minutes.
Just to be polite, Gus Lewis, 6216 Cobblestone Drive. The amount of misinformation that continues to spread among the general population about issues related to COVID-19 is astounding. I make the following statements, not as a member of the pandemic team, however, as a father of an elementary school and a medical expert in infectious disease. My goal, like many others, is to make sure our students stay in the classroom so they can be given the best education possible. Schools must implement layered prevention strategies to protect those that are not fully vaccinated. Although studies are currently underway to determine if those less than 12 years of age will benefit from COVID vaccine, the stay is not yet here. Mandatory masking must be made a critical part of any layered protection strategy. Many false claims have been made about masking. Surgeons and operating room staff have been wearing masks in the OR since the beginning of modern medicine without any impact to the wearer. Likewise, since the onset of COVID, workers in the COVID units, who put their own life on the line, have been wearing N95 masks for upwards of 12 to 18 hours a day without impact. Yes, cloth masks need to be washed. Molecules such as CO2, which have a diameter of 0.33 nanometers, are easily able to pass through high-efficiency masks such as an N95, which is defined in articles as the journal, in the Journal of Internal Infection Control, excuse me, as having less than 5% penetration of an aerosol with a mass median aerodynamic diameter of 0.3 microns, a difference of 1,000 times. We are still in a public health emergency, and in such an event, the public health, the health of the public does outweigh the health and the rights of an individual.
I'm sorry. Please honor every public speaker so we can hear them clearly and distinctly.
Must I remind you that more than half of our students are not vaccinated? My professional opinion is in line with the recent statements made by the American Academy of Pediatricians stating that all students older than two years of age and all staff should wear face masks at schools unless medical or developmental conditions prohibit use. Also, I understand there was hesitancy of the board to make such a recommendation at this time. I would therefore accept the following compromise. Rather than having universal masking at a high-level community spread, I would strongly recommend this be changed to a moderate spread, ideally low. I can tell you that the Delta variant is here in Erie. We have seen a handful of patients recently admitted to HAMIT who have been symptomatic, who have tested positive, who have not previously tested positive, and are also fully vaccinated. We know that Delta is more infectious than native strains and does not-
I'm sorry, Dr. Lewis, I'm sorry. Could everyone just please listen? We have listened to every speaker, and we're asking you to listen to this speaker. He is a parent. He's entitled to speak. Please. This is not a question-and-answer period. I'd ask you to please honor the speakers. Does not.
Does not.
Go ahead, Dr. Lewis. I'm sorry.
No problem. As I said earlier, my goal, like everyone else involved, is to keep the schools open five days a week. My concern is if we only start universal masking at a high level, we will start seeing interest school spread, which will inevitably lead to, lead to school closings. The school district has had over 4,000 exposures last year with zero transmission related to in-school learning at a time where very few school-aged children were eligible for vaccine. Masking is what did this. Masking prevented these exposures from developing into cases. We have no way to determine what the individual student and their household risks are for developing bad outcomes to COVID. From an infectious disease standpoint, there are always better outcomes when we are proactive in preventing disease rather than reacting to an established infection, although this is rarely the easier approach. Other school districts across the country have already adopted the AAP's stance on masking, that all students, teachers, and staff, and visitors to wear face coverings while indoors, regardless of their vaccination status. I challenge our board to continue leading the way in our children's education by mandating masking to keep our children in the classroom. Thank you for your time. As always, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Edward Tenon.
Tenon, you have five minutes.
My name is Edward Tenon. I live at 310 Strathmore Avenue. I'm a father, I'm a father, one student, husband. Probably more relevant to the situation, I also happen to be a frontline public servant. I served there all through the pandemic. I say it's relevant because it gives me perspective to call the actions of the board, the teachers, and the admins during the pandemic, because cowardly and criminal. First, while the rest of us had to work, or we had to scramble around, or people lost their employment, you all hid behind computers and cameras. You collected a full salary paid for by the taxpayers. You caused parents to lose their jobs and children to fall behind in their studies. Second, while these same parents were struggling with a lack of income and possibility of losing their homes due to schools being closed or having part-time virtual studies, you voted to raise our taxes by 1.8%. Lastly, when it came time to discuss the health and safety plan at the last meeting, you attempted to hide from us the proposed plan with only a small mention in the email newsletter at the very bottom and vote without our input, without the input for parents. The truth is, you knew that they would be outraged at the proposed plan, hence the number of parents you see here now. When I first read your proposed plan, I thought I was reading an excerpt from the Nuremberg Trials. Segregation, masking, testing, experimental vaccines. I had to ask myself, how have we gone from schools not being able to give a child a Tylenol to them wanting to jab our kids with a vaccine or stick something up their nose? It's scary the amount of authority you all believe you have. There have been multiple studies showing the danger to our child's mental health due to prolonged isolation and stress from the pandemic, as done by the University of Kentucky. COVID accounted for 1.2% of all deaths in children or adolescents between 0 and 24 years, yet during the same timeframe, suicide was either the number two or number three cause of death for kids in the same age group. One could almost take your concerns about teacher safety and staff safety seriously had we not seen him out in the public or on vacation maskless this summer. A simple browsing of their social media posts easily confirms this. The data is clear that our children have minimal risk to returning to a normal, mask-free environment, and that teachers and staff have a statistically higher chance of dying in a car crash on the way to school than dying of COVID transmitted by a child. I ask you to stop treating our kids like lepers. Therefore, I am telling you, not asking, that my child will not be masked or tested this year. Furthermore, I believe you should all resign, you should all resign due to your lack of confidence we all have in you right now. I say this as a public servant, because sometimes I think public servants forget that you serve the public. In closing, I'll leave you with this. Thomas Jefferson wrote that when the government fears its people, there's freedom. It's apparent you don't fear us, but you only fear these radically progressive leftist ideas. But I caution you, when Dr. Roberts leaves, takes his handsome smile and his progressive ideas to another school district, you will still be our neighbors. You will still want us keeping an eye on your house. You'll still want to come in our shops or have dinner around us and have it be civil. You will bear the weight of your shame if you mask our kids. I promise you that if our kids are forced to mask this year, you will learn to fear the people once more.
Thank you, Mr. Tenon.
John Moore.
It's a long walk down here. Hi. Thank you. You have five minutes. My name's John Moore. I live at 5091 North Sherred Court, and I am the father of three little girls who will be in fourth grade, second grade, and kindergarten at Grandview this fall. I never in a million years thought that I'd be standing up here in front of a school board meeting talking about, you know, basically having to say, I don't want my kids to wear a mask to school. I'm here because I can't stand to watch my little girls go to school one more day and get on the bus with a mask and come home and just be absolutely miserable because they can't be with their friends, they're isolated, they're terrified of their teachers. I just don't understand what we're doing and why we're putting our kids through this. I had, my first-grade daughter last year was told that if the teacher saw her with her mask down and saw her nose, that she would be sent to the principal. As a father, you know, that is so incredibly hard. All she wanted to do was to get a breath. You know, I understand that there are some folks who want to send their kids to school with masks. That is absolutely perfect. That is their choice, but it is also my right as a parent to decide for my child that I don't want them to go to school in a mask. You know, I just, the past year has been so incredible and so many different rules. At Valentine's Day, we had to send in Valentines. They had to be quarantined for five days before the, before the kids could send out Valentines. Why would you have to quarantine a Valentine? I mean, what are we doing? I mean, even this year. Now, you can take your mask off to run around. You can take your mask off at the cafeteria, and then you have to sit in the classroom with the mask on. What we're doing doesn't make sense. We are teaching these kids that there are little diseases, and they, people should be afraid of them, that the teachers should fear them because they're going to kill them. Our kids aren't diseases. They're not- They're not, they're not dangerous, and going to school should never make a child feel So, you know, I, I just hope that she'll do the right thing, you know, give people choice, you know. It's a parent's prerogative, you know, we're not here asking for your permission because we don't need to ask for your permission. You will make those choices, we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So, that concludes all the pre-registered five-minute speakers, and I'd like to thank everyone we did get that in within an hour with a minute to spare. We do have additional, three additional speakers have signed up for three minutes. And is there, and is there any, before we extend the time for visitor speaking, is there any other visitors like to speak for three minutes on any other topics that haven't been discussed so far? So, we discuss, if you'd like to address for three minutes on any other topics other than masking, the vaccines, the freedom of choice, health and safety plan, CRT, if there's any other relative to the, to the district? Yes. Okay.
We'll do the, we're going to do the signup persons first, and then we just need you to, is there a form?
They were out at the table.
The form is out at the table.
If anyone would like to speak, the forms are out at the table and the outside of the, in the foyer there. Before we do that, I do need to have a motion to expand, extend the visitor section.
Make a motion to extend, Janine. Second, Shirley.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, we'll extend it. So, Mr. Tenen, who's the first?
The first person is Craig Heenan.
Craig, you have three minutes, your name, address, and your topic for discussion.
Good evening. Craig Heenan, 3118 Oakley Drive. I'm the president of the McDowell Baseball Boosters, and at first I was really excited because I thought everybody was here for a new baseball field and fantastic. So, I was wrong. But, in any case, I just wanted to poke the fire a little bit. I know in end of April, May 2nd, actually when we met at the baseball field, we had 10 individuals there, some of the news channels were there, a lot of campaign buttons were there at the field at the time. And the plan was that we would meet after that meeting and talk about plans and development and, you know, what's next, and I haven't heard anything. So, it's been 80 days since that time, elections are over, but I'd like to just, you know, re-initiate that conversation and make sure that we have the opportunity to meet and that this doesn't go by the wayside again for another eight months.
So, thank you. Thanks.
Keith Canfield?
Canfield, you have three minutes, state your name and address and, and topic of
Keith Canfield, 123 Ever Street, Mill Creek. To quote Nelson Mandela, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats their children." The 2021 school year revelation was to many one of, one of disgusting abusive decisions that ignored facts and data that we were always told to follow. Healthy seniors were robbed of their chance to play out their last year's varsity sports to many that directly impacted their future as far as scholarships and following their dreams. Children were isolated and constantly in fear learning milestones were not reached. Many private schools provided in-person learning five days a week, children wearing masks, some without mask mandates. No major outbreaks, no mask hospitalizations, no thousands of teachers' deaths, no thousands of grandparents dead from child's transmission. It's been a widely accepted belief by child psychologists and responsible parents for years that excessive screen time and usage of electronic devices are detrimental to many levels of childhood development, and you all have done a 180 on this data. We taught our children, sorry, last year, we were lucky enough to get a spot in a private They offered five days a week in-school learning. We struggled to pay for it, and we compromised our beliefs on our children wearing masks in order to facilitate this. We taught our children that masks are temporary, that masks are nothing to be proud of. You do not wear a mask outside, and if you get in trouble with the school about masks, you will not be in trouble at home. That was our choice, and it will continue to be our choice. Enough is enough. Leave it up to the parents and leave it up to the teachers. Wear masks, don't wear masks. This will not be mandated, nor, you will find many parents sending their children without masks or pulling their children from this district. Expect to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars in funding if you continue with this. I also would like to address the school board. Do you believe there's a white supremacy problem in Mill Creek School District? Do you believe that there's white privilege in this district? Do you believe that children of color cannot make it in this district? I believe there were, let's see, James Connor made it to the NFL. But you as a whole make posts on Facebook about terrible white privilege problems and, and systematic racism that needs to be radically changed and radically, the words radically. That doesn't sit well with us. We haven't had a problem in this district. Don't make one.
Thank you, Mr. Canfield. If you have already have five minutes, please state your name, address, and topic. You have three minutes. Three minutes, I'm sorry, you have three minutes.
Did you state your name and address?
Name and address, please, before we start. I thought you just said it. Lee Aliotta, 538 Margot Court. This reminds me of June 2012. Let me say very succinctly, God bless every one of you, every parent, every taxpayer that you showed up tonight. Good evening, Board, Administration, students, parents, and taxpayers. Dear elected and appointed public officials, part of leadership is the, again, part of leadership, is the exhibition of responsibility, accountability, and transparency with direct communications with the stakeholders. Ask yourself the following questions and how you match up. Do you agree with me, there is a difference in the interpretation of both the district policy and public school codes by various solicitors throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania? Healthy leadership is an awareness, an alignment, an intentional use of your thoughts, words, and actions. One cannot have words without actions. For those in the media up there somewhere, there is a difference between journalism and gaslighting. Where, where are the eerie investigative journalists? The power of role modeling is true in every aspect of life. Children mimic their parents' values, behaviors, and habits, and employees do the same with their leaders. This dynamic is as deeply embedded at work as it is at home and in healthy leaders setting the positive example. I ask Superintendent Roberts, Solicitor Senate, school board directors, and all public-appointed officials, does your Facebook page or profile reflect your position as our elected officials and the philosophy you are recommending and approving for our children and, in my case, grandchildren? How will administration and school board directors address the transition from online teaching to in-person teaching and the advice from PSBA's attorney Eric Gilzback? Will there be- About three minutes is up. Thank you. Thank you. To be continued next month. Thank you.
That's the only ones I have unless there's more.
Last, the last call. One, sir, sir? One down. You have three minutes, state your name and address. In the meantime, is there anyone else that has a form or like to speak?
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Turner, 3269 West 13th Street. A couple remarks here. A mask. When all this came out, N95, we had to wear, had to wear. You should know that. But then all of a sudden, a beautiful county executive came out and said, you can wear a bandana, you could take a undershirt, you could cut that up, and you can wear that. So, what changed? What changed from a N95 to a bandana? To undershirt? Okay? That's my question. What changed? So, the statistics are all wrong. You guys are following statistics from our government. And do you really know what our government is right now? You might not know it. You might not know it. Okay? Read the Communist Manifesto, and you will get a grip of what our government is right now. Okay? Some of this will go in one ear and out the other, some of it hopefully will hit your heart. Now, talk about the heart. Where does critical race theory start from? Where does racism start from? Starts right in the heart. It starts in your heart. Because when kids are born, they're pure, are they not? They don't know what racism is. They want to, they want to play with everybody. Okay? But guess what? This might be in our schools, and we're going to start teaching kids to hate each other? It doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense. Unless, and I don't want to say this, but I will, unless you guys are racist and you want this. And I don't believe you guys are. I believe you guys mean the best that you can and do the best you can, but again, do not let our government policies hold you all hostage. Because that is what's happening. Okay? That's what's happening. Now, one more thing, and I'll make it quick. I don't agree with a lot of your policies, okay, what they teach in school, so I have a question for you, and I know it's not a question and answer. Am I allowed to teach the Bible in school? Am I allowed to come here and have Bible studies? That's what I want to know. You want to know why? Every answer you, everything in life that you want to know about, it's in the Bible. Basic instruction before leaving earth.
Okay, that concludes our visitor section. Like to thank everyone that came forward and expressed your thoughts.
President Winchell?
Yes.
There is a hand raised on the online forum.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure if they're looking to speak, but I don't want to exclude our, our partners out there.
Sir, you see that? Thank you, Mr. Linder.
Tracy?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, did you want to speak for the visitor section?
Yes, please.
Okay, Tracy, you have three, three minutes. Please identify your name, full name, and address.
Yes, my name is Tracy Hokinson. My address is 3910 Colonial Avenue. I would just like to speak about my children's experience at the Mill Creek Township School District. My children, I have three kids, two boys and a girl, and all of my children have experienced being treated differently because they are, have brown skin. My daughter has been treated differently because she has a disability. People have commented about her eyes. People have asked my son if they would be able to say the N-word in front of them. My kids have experienced numerous, not numerous, but they have experienced being treated differently at our school district. So, I guess I just wanted to say, for those people who don't think that there's a problem because, for people being treated differently because they are of a different color or of a different ability, that I would like to say that that's not true, and that is not my children's experience, nor my experience through my children at the Mill Creek Township School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. I see no other hands raised, whether online or in the public, so that will conclude our visitor section. Again, thank you all for your thoughts and comments this evening. Moving on the agenda, item three, special school board meeting items, 3.01, health and safety plan discussion. Dr. Roberts?
Thank you, President Winchell. The health and safety plan is brought to you all tonight. Clearly, this is one of the auditions of the plan. The health and safety plan discussion is one that we are so immensely grateful to have, not just the board's deliberations, but certainly value the input of all of our parents and guardians who are in the audience this evening. And so, I know that we have shared an update about the health and safety plan, so certainly want to pivot it back, pivot back to the board for any discussion on the plan of changes.
Do we need a motion to bring it forward?
Yes, we need a motion. Yeah, we need a motion in a second, then we have a discussion, maybe a review of the-
I'll make a motion to bring the plan forward for review.
Second, Dean.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second discussion. Dr. Roberts, do you have someone review the plan once again for the public?
All right. So, I guess, based on the discussion, I think it's appropriate to focus on page six, which is the part that deals with the universal and correct wearing of masks. And it indicates that, you know, Mill Creek Township School District in determining the district's masking policy for grades K through 12, the board of directors will take into consideration the local county COVID-19 infection rates, community spread, and vaccination rates, as well as consideration of guidance for K through 12 guidance on mask wearing from the CDC, the PDE, and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. The plan goes on and says, maintaining mandatory consistent correct use of masks by adults and children on a school bus and at arrival and departure points, bus stops, following the CDC and Department of Education guidance, bus drivers will have extra masks available in case a student does not have one. There are exceptions to, will be for individuals who cannot safely wear a mask or have a mask exemption form through- or have a mask exemption form through student services. The use of a, a face shield without a use of a mask is not recommended. Face shields have not prevented respiratory droplets transmission and are not effective in preventing transmission of the virus that causes COVID-19. Let me just make a comment in regard to the bus rule. The Mill Creek Township School District Board of School Directors does not have any discretion in regard to the bus rule and wearing masks. That is not within their power. The United States Secretary of Health and Human Services and the CDC has issued an order in regard to transportation, which includes school buses. That order was issued in January. That order is still in effect and we can provide that copy of that order on the website if you need a copy to see the order. So in regard to a bus transportation, the school district is following the law and only the United States Secretary of Health and Human Services has the power to amend that order. And, you know, there's been, talk about that order as it relates to various methods of transportation and that order has been upheld recently. We received information from members of the public in regard to the cruise boat and the industry and the use of the CDC's rule and order on that. And a federal district court wanted to interrupt the power of the CDC in regard to that order, but the United States Court of Appeals reversed that district court. So as far as the transportation is concerned, that order is in place and we have no discretion but to follow it. Okay? Moving on then back to the health and safety plan as we're, as we have it drafted. This is just for consideration for the board, it's not, you know, but. Tiered masking based on level of community spread in order to prevent intermittent building closure and loss of in-person learning. CDC levels of community trans, transmission, uh, and we've reviewed that earlier as part of the presentation, uh, there's low, uh, moderate, low is zero to nine cases, moderate is 10 to 49 new cases, substantial and high are 50 to 99 cases. And what the plan says, under low, no masking requirement, parent choice. Under low. Under moderate, no masking requirement, parent choice. Under substantial and high, reinstitute masking policy regardless of vaccination status in order to protect in-person learning and prevent cluster cases and/or additional spread of COVID-19 amongst students and staff. IEP and mask exemption policies will remain in place. And the plan goes on to discuss what a cluster is, which we, has already been reviewed as part of the presentation tonight. And so I think that's the, uh, the summary of that portion of the health and safety plan. And I would turn it back to Dr. Roberts and the board for discussion.
Thank you, Attorney Senator. This time I believe that given information that was just shared, certainly want to punctuate the instructional model and the tiered system that we are considering. Again, we will continue to utilize a multifactorial approach where we are not only looking at the PDE or Department of Health guidelines, but certainly monitoring with our public health officials, um, what is, what are the positivity rates within the Erie County community? And with low or moderate spread, we will certainly respect and honor parent choice, but certainly when we get to places around the higher substantial spread with 50 to 99 cases, certainly we will continue to value the input of parents and community members as, as we've done in the past, but to make sure we are grounded in our decisions, not only in a single source, but to look at a multifactorial approach, which, which includes our public health data. At this time, I will yield to President Winchell and the board for any discussions.
Okay, is there any other discussions?
So I had a question. If we follow this guideline here and we hit a number of 50 on a Wednesday, will we come in on Thursday and have to mask or will we follow that through to the next week? We, we can't go back and forth between, you know, if we have 48 cases, 52 cases on a rolling average, how would that process work? Every Friday? Okay, and the following Monday would indicate what we are going to do for that entire week? Thank you. Great presentation, by the way, Ms. Krolzik and Dr. Lewis, appreciate you being here and giving us that background.
So I just want to also, uh, you know, clarify if there is some confusion on the zero to nine. Remember those low, moderate and substantial numbers are per 100,000 individuals, so in Erie County, you have, you know, more than 250, so multiply that times five for those accurate numbers on low, moderate and substantial. And I will say that I know that the superintendents have a weekly meeting with the intermediate unit to discuss these safety plans. As we know, this is a dynamic process. From June 28th meeting till today, they've been meeting on a weekly basis and will continue to do so. Again, it's a dynamic process. Other board members, comments, please.
Excuse me, President Winchell, is there, is there a point that we've determined that if an instant rate within a building, let's say gets to a certain point that we would have to close the building to in-person learning?
Thank you, Crystal.
The answer to that is yes, and that's in collaboration with Erie County Department of Health. That is, um, in the PowerPoint when we reviewed clusters. So one positive case of COVID-19 then turns into being linked into two or more other cases. At that point, that wouldn't be my decision or Dr. Roberts' decision or this board's decision, that would be the Erie County Department of Health telling us that we have to shut down in order to prevent additional COVID-19 cases within one building because then we have spread within our school.
Um, I have a question, Crystal. So we're, we're talking about when we get to substantial or severe and we introduce masking at that point, but the kids in those circumstances won't be masking at lunch, at recess, is that indoor or outdoor? And then we have other instances where they won't be masking and I'm glad that we wouldn't be masking in those instances, but I, I guess I, I want, I want to know why. We will not have a kid mask in gym class when they're running around, but yet they're going to be masking in, in class, sitting in. Please let me finish. Sitting in class, because if they're going to be in, if the masks are protecting our students, then they would be protecting, and I don't want the mask when they're running around in gym class or eating at lunch. This is me personally. So I, I feel like we're sending signals if we're like, well, you don't have the mask if you're eating lunch or in gym or at recess. We didn't clarify indoor or outdoor unless I missed it, but yet you have to sit in the classroom and wear a mask. I, I guess I'm having a hard time reconciling the two. And I'd like a clarification on how we, how we're justifying not masking in certain instances and yet we are masking in the classroom. And if we're looking to protect those people who, um, are unable to be vaccinated or aren't vaccinated, how are we achieving that? By having these intermittent, not, and kids are still, um, running around playing together or sitting at lunch and talking together. It seems, it seems, I can't reconcile the two and if you can clarify that, that would be helpful for me.
Sure, and I'll invite Dr. Lewis to jump in anytime, but the CDC guidance has been updated, so for those of you that have taken the time to review it or read it, you would know these answers, but for those of you have, that haven't, that is the purpose of the PowerPoint. So, um, part one, you can't mask when you're eating or drinking. Part two, one of the things that's changed is during physical fitness, high intensity workouts, you are no longer required to mask. That's been one of the things parents have been most complained about last year or most concerned about, I guess I mean. And so, um, we did adopt that guidance from the CDC when it changed at the start of summer in June, um, and I believe that that has gone really well. Two, you're not.
I'm sorry, somebody's talking, please be quiet.
Um, that's listed on the CDC website if you'd like to reference it. Two, you're also not required, that's gym class, physical exercise, which we can socially distance them in our gym class, but due to the size of our district and number of students, we can't socially distance them in the classroom. Obviously, we don't have a choice when they're eating or drinking for them to mask. One of the big components of this, though, I think that, um, parents need to understand is that the CDC did update quarantine guidelines. We interrupted a lot of social, emotional wellbeing and household, um, routines last year with our quarantines that are required because it was a six-foot circumference to quarantine any student around a positive COVID case. If parties are masked appropriately, it is now three feet per the CDC in classrooms. I will repeat that. It is three feet in school, in classrooms, if parties are masked appropriately. Our number of quarantines will drastically increase and we will be able to keep these kids in in-person learning. Furthermore, regardless of anyone's opinion on masking, it's more about keeping these people or these students in person for school, which is everybody's goal this year. So based on all the updated guidelines and research, I've taken that, applied it to trying to meet the parents' needs and their requests and meet what we can do to keep them healthy and safe and in five-day in-person learning. If everyone thinks back to the start of fall last year, we constantly had intermittent building closures on and off. And that was mostly due to the state's model of hitting that threshold of numbers, which has now been removed. However, if the students start to spread COVID amongst themselves, we won't be able to keep in-person learning, which is why we developed this model to try to meet the needs of the parents and their wishes for parental choice, but also if we get to a threshold, not be closing buildings all the time like we did last year because we know that model doesn't work for them either.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you're out of order, sir, please.
Shields are no longer recommended this year, it's also on the CDC website.
Sir, you're out of order, please.
Crystal, if you wouldn't mind just one more question, please, I'm sorry. I tried to get in there.
I'm sorry, you're out of order, please, please be quiet.
Crystal, in the, um, plan, I'm looking at page 11 and I see the words diagnostic and screen, screening, testing. We've received a couple of emails from, um, parents that are concerned about our district doing testing on students. We are not doing any of that, is that correct?
Well, that's one of the recommendations from the CDC, we have not adopted that, no.
I'm sorry, you're out of order, sir, and if you continue to be out of order, I'll ask the police to escort you out. I'm sorry, you're out of order, sir, and if you continue, I'm going to ask the police officers to escort you out.
How do we get into order, sir?
Could you please escort the person out?
How do we get into order, sir, so we can ask? We're all here, buddy, let's talk.
This is the time for the board to have a discussion, thank you very much. Any further questions by, any further questions by the board?
Is there, is there any thought as we go forward here with the, uh, community transition, transmission and going from a, a low to a moderate on, and, and unfortunately would maybe have to close a building as, as time goes on? Is, will there be a minimum time of, um, uh, learning virtually versus in, in person? Or, I mean, every Friday, I guess we look at this and, and make a determination. Should there, should there not be a, like a minimum time? I mean, the, the teachers are going to have to react, you know, at, uh, at a moment's notice here, uh, going from virtual to real time or vice versa. Should there be a minimum two week, one week, uh, time to do that as it could go back and forth as, as we go forward?
Thank you, Mr. DePlacido. So I just want to reiterate what was shared earlier from the pandemic team and that is once quarantine, once students are quarantined and clearly if we have to go towards a closure, the closure is not Mill Creek Township School District's decision. It is based on our positivity rate and we will receive guidance. As a matter of fact, we will receive that directive from the Department of Health to move towards a closure. We will have to sort of reconcile that with our commitment and our commitment remains and you've heard me say this over and over again, we want to have our children in class, in in-person learning, five days a week. Every aspect of, of sort of educational practitioners, the research tells us that it's the most effective way to teach our children. I'm not here, I never have I advocated for online or virtual learning, but because of necessity, that's why we've moved towards school closures. So next year, based on what was shared by the pandemic team, if we have to move towards a school closure, um, we will certainly have students out to the minimum extent possible based on what is recommended in terms of quarantining.
I just have a few questions. So, and it's probably in this document somewhere, it's parents' choice whether they're vaccinated or not for their, when they're at the low levels for the mask wearing, correct, in school? And the quarantine comes from the level of transmission in the classroom. So we had quarantines a lot last year when they were wearing masks. So if we have no mask and they're, they have to quarantine, it's for somebody who is within six feet of the infected individual in the school building? And what about like if they play sports and they're unmasked and they're coming in contact So if they're vaccinated, they won't be.
Can you hear it back, sorry? Can you hear it back? No? Okay, we'll bring Crystal to the mic, thank you for that.
Yeah, sorry, Crystal.
As far as I know, um, that's in coordination with the local Department of Health, but that guidance hasn't changed. Unless they are vaccinated, they will still be required to quarantine. So unless athletics who play on teams have gotten vaccinated, that decision comes in collaboration with the local Department of Health. If they're exposed, as of now, as far as I know, they're still required to quarantine if they're exposed.
So would that hold true for, would that hold true for?
The vaccinated are not required to quarantine if you are not vaccinated.
Crystal, would that hold true for this, true for the staff and the teachers if they're vaccinated and they come in contact?
They're not required to quarantine, but if they're unvaccinated, they are. And again, that's not my rules, my decision, that's in collaboration with the local Department of Health.
Okay. Do, what percentage of teachers are vaccinated? Do we know?
At the last check, we were just over 70% of our teachers vaccinated. Remember, we are not, again, because of HIPAA regulations, we can only request for our staff and students actually for their vaccine records, but what we've ascertained is over 70%, we have over 70% of our teachers and staff.
Are we recognizing antibody tests, positive antibody test?
Um, we do accept them if someone's going to be quarantined and they've chosen to get one to show that they have the antibodies, we do accept that and then they do not have to quarantine. Again, that's in collaboration with our local Department of Health guidelines.
Any other questions, discussion, comments? Okay, hearing none. We do have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. The item on the, uh, to be voted on is the health and safety plan. So, um, sir, let me take a roll call, vote on that, please.
Mr. Lindner?
Yes.
Ms. McClintock?
Yes.
Mr. Winchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Winchell?
Yes.
Mr. Busco is not here. Ms. Capabianca?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. DePlacido?
Yes.
And Dr. Lansbury?
Yes.
Sure.
Motion passes. Okay, Dr. Roberts?
Thank you. I just certainly wanted to reference the last comment, question that was asked by Board Member Mrs. Capabianca with regards to athletics. I certainly want to go on public record to make it very clear to everyone present, similar to our commitment to have students return to five days a week in-person learning for the next school year, we are equally as committed to making sure that all of our athletics and extracurricular programs are back in person. We have looked at the research, and certainly we are fully aware that having those extracurricular activities, athletics, and other activities that are not necessarily instructional will certainly support the social emotional learning and social well-being of all of our students. And I think many of you know, I certainly have a bias in recognizing how important extracurricular activities and athletics are. But it's important for us to know that, based on what Mrs. Cross had just shared, if we have a team of student athletes, one student athlete tests positive, this number of student athletes who comes into contact with that young person, if they are vaccinated, then they will likely be exempt from quarantining. If they're not, because we are following the Department of Health's guidelines, the unvaccinated student athlete will end up missing a part of their season because they will be required to quarantine. But remember, we are committed to having them back in the field of play, in the pool with our extracurricular activities, but it's important to know that we will continue to follow the Department of Health's guidelines while also having and respecting your input and valuing your input as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion just passed. Safety Plan as presented, passed. Yes, it did.
Can you confirm, Gary, what the motion that passed?
The motion that passed was the approval of the Health and Safety Plan that was presented. Item 3.02 is the Allegheny Health Network Contract of Child Development. Dr. Roberts, administrator, like to speak to this on this behalf.
These two.
The AHSN's contract? Yes. Out of order, Mr. Aliotta.
You're out of order.
This is, President Winchell and board, this is an outside contract with the AHSN and Vincent's that allows our employee physicals, and so we would like action on this contract.
I'll make a motion to approve item 3.02. John?
Got a second, please?
Second, Janine.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Against nay. Motion passes. 3.03 is a Grafton Training Agreement. Thank you, Mr. Nantam.
The Grafton Training Agreement is a train-to-trainer agreement. Grafton Company comes here and trains five of our staff members in U-Car, which is our trauma-informed approach to dealing with students who are physically dangerous to themselves or others. We've been using it for six years now in the district very successfully, so we pay to get trained, and then we turn around and train our special education assistants and teachers.
Okay. Have a motion, please. Motion, Dean. Have a second?
Second, Rick.
Okay, Rick, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Against nay. Motion passes. Next item is 3.04. It's, Dr. Roberts was invited to speak at National Superintendent's Forum in Miami, Florida, and also attended the Education Revolution for School Leaders Conference in Berkeley, New York, looking for approval of those two costs not covered by the conference that had paid for some of them, so as lodging, meals, and flight. Put that in the form of a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Against nay. Motion passes. 3.05 is the Student Code of Conduct for the school year 2021, 2022. Mrs. Bosley?
Thank you. Thank you. As you know, annually, we do approve the Student Code of Conduct. There are no major changes this year outside of the process. So procedurally, in the past where we have printed the Code of Conduct and it has gone home to, you know, with every child, to every family, that process will move to an online acknowledgement and signature sign-off process this year. We will be rolling out those directions to all of our families in mid-September and then hoping to have all of those electronic sign-offs completed by the end of September. Typically, we use the entire month of September to require those sheets to be submitted back to the district, and that will be an electronic process we'll be able to monitor.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion.
Make a motion to approve it. Janine?
Thanks, Janine. Have a second?
Second, John.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? Just like to thanks for facilitating that online. I know there's a lot of printing there in past years, so appreciate that. Okay, having a motion? Yes?
One quick question for Charcy. Is a paper version available if requested? And if so, how would they do that?
Yes, we plan to have 50 copies initially to start in every office, so that if a family needs a hard copy, for whatever reason, they're not able to access that online, they can have a hard copy that we can send home with their child.
Thank you.
Now, thank you, Dr. Lansbury. Very good question. So we have a motion. We have a second. We had discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Against nay. Motion passes. Virtual day form, 3.06. Mr. Landau?
That form is required by the state in case we have to pivot and use a virtual day or for our predetermined virtual days that we have in our calendar on those election days. It just states that we are going to continue to provide a freaking appropriate public education to all of our students.
Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, Dean.
Thank you.
Second, Janine.
Thank you, Janine, for second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Against nay. Motion passes. 3.07, the Forecast Five Agreement.
Forecast Five is a company that we've chosen after a careful vetting process and looking at different needs, looking at how those needs of the vendors met, was unique to MTSD. We did decide upon Forecast Five, Lab Five, which is a subsidiary actually of Forecast Five to meet the need of our data analytic capacity. There's a number of benefits to this, administrative interaction with attendance, discipline, course enrollment success rates, e-learning participation and engagement, assessment results and so forth. It really allows us to get a lot of instantaneous, credible, real-time data in our administrative team's hands immediately and with great accuracy, from a variety of sources too as well, state and local assessments and so forth.
Have a motion, please.
Motion, John.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Just from the standpoint, this didn't come through committee, like normally we're going to have these topics come through the committee of the whole for discussion. Just wondered if any of the board members would have any comments relating to that before we vote on that?
It's a significant expenditure of $78,000, and we have had some brief conversations, but I would like to hear more about it if you would please consider bringing it to the committee meeting coming up next month so that we could discuss it, have question and answer. And then at that point also, there's the opportunity for the public to ask questions and answers if they like. I just hesitate to move things forward without them following the normal path of going through committee first.
Sure. And then, you know, that is a little bit of an aberration on something like this, and that's only due to the vetting that had to occur with the different vendors, their timeframes to present to us in order to allow for administrative interaction before the school year started and things like that. It was just the way that the timeframe aligned, really at being the mercy of other providers, that we were trying to get as close to, that we were actually trying to do this by June, but we were really at the mercy of when they were able to present to us, when they were able to present their product. That was part of the vetting process, that we did have them present this to us. We scored them using rubrics according to our team. So it's a little bit unusual, and I apologize for that, again, for that aberration, but that's really why. It was just really because we were at the mercy of when they were able to present to us and what this could look like. So it's a little bit unusual as far as that goes.
Is it a hardship moving it two weeks forward to the committee meeting?
It delays a little bit on the administrative interaction and when we can get this into our principals' hands as soon as possible. But, you know, if we have the timeframe still being able to do that prior to the start of the school year, then I think we would be okay. That's what our expectation is. We could do that in two weeks. We could wait if the board wanted to see exactly what it looks like, exactly the capacity that, you know, we would, and what the administrative expectation is within that interactive piece and how we're going to work with them to, you know, produce results that are student-driven and data-driven in that decision-making.
May also offer that, and thank you for sharing that, and certainly we will be open to moving it towards the Committee of the Whole Meeting to have additional board input. But given sort of our commitment around providing our principals with guidance and a platform to be able to utilize data-driven instructions, we have our first set of data step-back meetings scheduled for August 11th. This would be incredibly helpful if we can have this information into the hands of our principals to commence with training.
Any other discussion?
If we're going to vote, I do have other questions, but if we're going to push, then I will wait to the Cal.
Well, we do have a motion on here to approve this. If we want to push it to the Cal, then we need to amend that motion.
Yeah, so a motion to refer to committee or a motion to table it is needed?
I would like to make a motion to move it to committee. I'm concerned, I understand the timeframe. I just don't like the going out of the process. There's a process that we have used, and there's a reason that we use it, and I'm sorry that it's coming to us so late, but I'm not ready to approve it this evening.
Okay, so we have one motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Lindner, it's the second. We have first, second, now a discussion on moving it to the Cal. Any?
I think the, this has been looked at. I think there's a timing issue here. I think we ought to vote tonight.
Okay, so the amended motion is, any other discussion?
So what's the date of the Cal? The Cal is?
August 12th.
August 12th. And, Dr. Roberts, you're looking at using this August 11?
Prior to August 11, August 11 is the day for data step-back meetings. The process of the data step-back meetings, and if I can abbreviate that discussion, really requires our principals and assistant principals to utilize data to demonstrate that they have an encyclopedic knowledge of everything data in their buildings. These are data-driven decisions. This is a platform that we will be able to utilize to make sure that we are marrying, if I may, all of our data sources, and it includes every aspect of our data, particularly our quantitative data for the benefit of principals. If you recall, this is the occasion where principals, once every quarter, four times a year, will have an opportunity to present in front of the core team, as well as to present in front of board members, exactly where we are in terms of school operations and in order to receive feedback about what decisions they need to make and what supports we need to give them to improve their performances across the board.
Attorney Senate corrected me, and the Cal meeting is August the 9th. I'm sorry, we were using a 12th previously, but it's Monday, August the 9th.
I guess my concern is the fact that we don't normally have a July meeting. We are actually having this meeting because of the Health and Safety Plan, and all of a sudden, a meeting for this Health and Safety Plan has had several other items attached to it. If it was needed by August, my question would be, why wasn't this discussed in June?
It was just an issue surely really pairing down those vendors. There's a lot of data analytic capacity out there, and as we learn, there's a lot of companies that are using that, using statewide data, tying that into and making things very user-friendly for schools and school leaders to be able to access that data. What we learned very clearly in that process was simply some vendors are a lot better than others. And to narrow it down to the three, to even get to them, because they're all very familiar that there's SRF funding available that districts have in order to make these purchases, the timeframe and what their schedules look like, to when we were able to reach out to them and when they were able to coordinate presenting their product to us, giving us time to ask questions and interact with them about that product, just ended up taking a lot longer than what we had anticipated due to, in part, to the high volume that these vendors are being inundated with similar requests from other districts throughout the country and throughout the Commonwealth. So it was just, it was far more tedious because of when they were available to present to us.
Thank you, Dr. Stup. President and Mrs. Winchell, I have two thoughts, two quick reactions, if I may. The first is, I certainly want to continue to sort of build and maintain fidelity to the process of getting things through the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and so I will certainly want to yield to the board's discretion for us to take it to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. And secondly, I have the utmost confidence in our core team members that, at least for the first data step-back meetings, that we will be able to provide a support, adequate support that is needed to principals with, prior to the approval of our Forecast Five. And so I certainly want to yield to the board that we will take this to the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and we will just work a little smarter to make sure that we get principals what they need. Because I really want to maintain fidelity to the process, to put, really commission critical items through our Committee of the Whole Process. So thank you all for this guidance.
Dr. Stup, is there a possibility to get a pilot license or just a demo license that would give you the same capability, at least for the next few weeks? Or are they not open to doing something like that?
I could work, they've been really reasonable to deal with and understanding what, you know, they understand the process and boards and how availability and votes and so forth go by with approval of contracts. So I've worked pretty closely with actually a number of these companies to get to this point, but I can certainly reach out to them and explain what the ask is and see what they can accommodate. They should be able to put something forward that, and I imagine they have a willingness to do that, to say, here's exactly what you're getting with this, that would greatly understand, enhance, excuse me, your understanding of what the product is and how it would be used. I think they would provide that for us.
Okay. Thank you. How long have you been working on this?
Just the coordination efforts for several weeks now. Even to get, truthfully, what really extends that a lot more that I did learn from a couple vendors was, when you put things out to competitive bid, they don't want to just provide you a number. They require you to go through a number of hoops to before you can get to that number. It's kind of like when you buy a car and they'll say, well, let's get to the price in a second. Why don't you take it for a test drive and then we'll talk, and then we'll go through that. So it's hard to even get what the actual quote's going to look like without going through a lot of requisite steps in the process to say, okay, you've shown us the product, we've been able to interact with it. Then they say, okay, let's next week sit down again and see if you have any further questions and how you do that. So it is really time-consuming, but, you know, it's a process that we learned a great deal from, and what we learned from that is that some of the vendors really were, you know, better at it than others, and the product was more viable for what Mill Creek needs. So we think we've arrived at some good conclusions, but we'll be happy to share that with you in August. Not a problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so the motion is to defer this to the August 9th Committee of the Whole Meeting. We have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. Let's vote. All in favor of delaying till the Cal? Say aye. Aye. Against nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Item 3.08 is the NWEA MAP Growth Agreement for a three-year subscription at a cost of $217,000.
This time, we'd like to have Jen Donmeyer and Joe Orlando provide the board and public with an overview of the necessity for this agreement.
Good evening. So when we talk about NWEA MAP Growth Assessment, what is it? It is a suite, a collection of assessments that focus on the areas of math, reading, language usage, and science. This assessment provides targeted questions to drill down to student proficiency level by advancing the content-specific questions as students work through the assessment to determine their levels of content mastery. And then through a variety of reporting tools, student data can be analyzed and evaluated to offer differentiated instruction and formative assessment opportunities to increase student growth and mastery of the content. There are three targeted benefit areas for us to choose the NWEA MAP Growth Assessment. The first are the student benefits. By having our students complete these assessments, it assists in addressing student needs identified specifically and targeted by standards. They also provide targeted student resources to remediate and enrich student mastery and understanding of the content. The next area of benefit is for the teacher benefit. There's real-time reporting options as our students go ahead and complete those assessments. Teachers can actually watch, monitor, and see student progression as they complete the test. They also have immediate access to student data, both before, during, and after testing. There are administration benefits as well. Student reporting tools are available to target identified areas of need within a specific grade level or building. Additional points of data are also available to support decision-making processes. Who is using the NWEA MAP testing in our area? Well, within our state, 95 public school districts utilize the NWEA MAP Growth Assessments. Locally, General McLean School District, Gerard School District, Northeast, Fairview, Crawford Central, and Franklin Area School Districts employ the test. Finally, what does a rollout of NWEA MAP testing look like for our district? The provider offers professional development prior to the administration. Our hope is that we can employ the Train the Trainer model, which will involve our building administration and our academic interventionists, who will then become the content experts and be able to work with each member of our faculty and staff. There are windows of assessment administration available for us that are flexible and district-defined, so we can select when to administer these tests that most suit our needs. Finally, the company also offers professional development after assessment administration. Again, we would employ the Train the Trainer model, with our building administration being present, as well as our academic interventionists, who can then continue to work with our faculty and staff to drill down to what our student needs are. Thank you.
At this time, I guess if there's any questions regarding this, and I know one of them is going to be the committee issue, and again, I know Jen started working on this in the spring. We couldn't bring it forward until we had, due to the price, and it was ESRS-funded, we had to meet with multiple companies and have quotes from three different companies, and we did not get everything finalized until, I believe it was last Wednesday, when I went into Dr. Roberts, asking if we could please get this forward due to the timing. And it is critical because we need to set up the professional development so we can administer the first round of this assessment in the first couple of weeks of school, and it will help us identify targeted area of needs, what learning loss did or didn't occur for certain students, and how we're going to meet their needs as we begin our school year.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve 3.08, the NWEA MAP Growth Agreement?
I'll make a motion.
Second, Janine.
Okay, discussion. I'll start this. I think it's another item that, again, not following the process, going through the committee of the whole. I think we just need to kind of stick to that process and be consistent with that. That's my comments. Don't know if anyone else has anything to say about it. It's an awful lot of money, $217,000.
And was this to clarify, this was coming out of ESRS funds?
That's correct.
So once, it's a three-year contract?
Yes.
So it's a three-year contract, so we won't have this anymore after the ESRS funds have expired? Or are we planning on getting, paying it with ESRS funds and then paying it out of pocket, so to speak, after three years?
I guess we, my thought is reviewing the impact, talking to neighboring districts. It's very impactful on their instruction. The biggest conversation I had was with General McLean and what it's done for them. They speak very highly of it. As we were researching, I think what I would do, my recommendation would be, we look at this after, when we're getting close to the end of the contract, and determine, is it meeting our needs? How do we want to proceed forward? And the other possibility that we have, I know, and I'm going to look at Aaron, we have until 2024 to dispense our ESRS funding. We probably could do this again with that funding, because the contract would be up.
Thinking in the long term, we would probably like to put it structurally into our budget. Long term.
Thank you.
So tell me, from a high level, is this an evaluation program, or is it something like Freckle, or what's analogous to this?
It's, and I'll start, and I'll let Jen jump in. It's not like Freckle, because it's not, kids aren't going to go on here and do assignments. It's more, it's providing us better, a better tool than the CDT. And it's more of our control. We set when we do it, we're not at the mercy of someone else. It's a more efficient tool, and then I'll let Jen.
It's much more interactive than CDT's that we've used in the past. It's real, live reporting. So let's say you have a student in your classroom who needs to use the restroom. Teachers have the autonomy to pause the test, which we know that the amount of time that the student puts into the test then affects, you know, their score on the test. So they can, teachers with active monitoring can watch the students complete the test. So if you have students who unfortunately might be just clicking through it, they can go and have a conversation with that particular student, as well as, you know, if they need to reset the test, they have the option to do that and not rely on someone else. Whereas a CDT, you know, it takes a lot longer to complete a CDT. This, you know, based on the information that we read, it's less than an hour for administration. When I was in the classroom using CDT's, it was two 80-minute blocks that I had to plan for kids to be able to take that test. So the targeted reporting that teachers will be able to use is really kind of what helped us to decide to bring this forward and the resources that are available.
Let me also add that the NWE MAP Assessment is one of the most credible and reliable platforms in the country. Because the assessment is focused on continuing to monitor student growth in real time, it also allows teachers to reiterate what Jen and Joe shared, to provide targeted and differentiated instruction to meet the needs of students. And as we're all aware, mitigating student learning loss is one of our big areas of focus for next year, and that simply means that we need to have a much more robust formative assessment program. And the NWE MAP Assessment gives us that opportunity.
What are we paying for CDT's right now? What kind of contract do we have for CDT's?
There is no contract, and we haven't used CDT at the elementary level in the past few years.
Okay.
We used a Freckle Benchmark Assessment, which was just part of the Freckle suite. This will provide us better data, and then what we'll be able to do, it will work kind of in conjunction with Freckle, Jason, to your question. Then the teachers will be able to target the assignments for the students on Freckle based on this more robust and real-time data.
I have two questions, I guess. One of the problems with CDT results was the difficulty the teachers had, kind of interacting curriculum with CDT results, and thus, a lot of those results never really were used very well. So I guess the question is, how well does this interact with your current curriculum, so that the results are actually usable in a kind of real-time forum, so that I know exactly where to go in my curriculum to strengthen a student's skill base in order to improve those results? First, second question, how well do these results interact with your Forecast Five Data Management Program?
I'll take the second one first, because that's the easier one. When we met, the Lab Five will be able to pull this data as part of our school's data. They will, they'll have access. So when principals need reports, or if they're prepping something for, say, the quarter, their step-back meetings, they'll be able to pull our MAP data using Lab Five.
And I'll go ahead and address the first question, Dr. Lansbury. It's standards-based, so it's standards aligned directly to our PA Common Core standards. And the other benefit is the fact that it goes with students regardless of transition between fifth and sixth grade or eighth and ninth grade. The data will follow the students. We've run into difficulty with those particular grade levels in the past.
And we should, and we left out, we're going to have this in first through 10th grade.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a couple.
No, I was just going to mention again that, you know, we had two meetings in June, and none of this was discussed at all in June, and here we are approving it on the same night that we're learning about it.
And again, I will apologize, we didn't have everything we needed from all of the companies that are required due to the ESRS, using ESRS money until last Wednesday. And again, it's not an excuse. It was just, they didn't get us what we needed until that time.
I guess I'd want to know, what would be the impact if we decided to do the same and move this forward to committee before voting on it versus trying to answer all of our questions tonight?
So if it pieces the board, we will consider the impact, that would probably be minimal, and move this towards committee. And so it's certainly convenient with the team for us to discuss how we move forward. It wouldn't be a significant loss for us, but it certainly would succumb to the board's ask and move this toward committee.
Yeah, I would just say with this significant amount of money and more questions, is there an interest of the board to have a motion to defer this to the committee of the whole on August 9th? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion on that?
So when we say we're moving it forward to the committee, we're moving it forward to the committee of the whole to approve, not to run it through committee and approve it at the regular scheduled board meeting in August. Just a point of clarification.
Well, the committee of the whole isn't a voting meeting. We'd have a meeting after that, right?
I mean, you could take an action at the committee of the whole that allows approval at that time.
Yep.
But taking it to the committee of the whole meeting means that we would have more information, we would have more time for questions, and then there is always the opportunity for anyone from the public to ask a question related to it before the decision is made.
They also put it on the committee of the whole board meeting that directly followed the committee of the whole, assuming that we would-
Move it forward.
-advance it to that meeting.
Yes.
Yes. Understood, thank you.
Okay, so we have the motion to move it to the August 9th committee of the whole. We have a second, we have that discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Motion passes. Okay, last item for action items here is 3.09, the Personnel Report of July 2021. Can I motion on that?
I'll make a motion, Janine.
You have a second.
Second, Dean.
Okay, discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until, I believe, the August 3rd meeting we talked about?
Yes, that's correct. And Mrs. Plentik, are we seeing the August 3rd meeting, which is a proposed special board meeting?
Yes. I think that way we have, we're able to approve or not approve in a timely manner for the start of school.
Thank you.
Second, Dean.
Okay, so this is a motion to move this personnel report to the August 3rd special meeting. We had a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Again, I think it's just a thing of running it through the committee.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, hearing, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Motion passes. ESRS report, Attorney Senate. What I have for you tonight is the College Connection Gift Agreement. This is an agreement with the Connor family, who is generously making a donation of $70,000 per year for four years in order to help fund the College Connection Guidance Position? Excuse me. It's not a guidance position, it's a classified position. Thank you. Classified position. So we would need a motion to approve the agreement as provided.
Make a motion to approve the agreement. Janine.
Second, Dean.
Discussion. I just think this is another good opportunity for us to partner, strategic partner with a private individual of, you know, getting involved with the school district. It's a great, great project. We appreciate the generosity of Mr. Quander and position that really help and enhance our seniors as they prepare to go to college. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, nay. Motion passes. Old business. Is there any old business? I guess I just have one item. I know we heard it tonight about the ESRS funding. I know that we spent a lot of time, Dr. Roberts and Aaron, Chief Financial Officer, about the ESRS funds, but, you know, with the next year or two, it'd be good to have some plans, and maybe Aaron, I'll challenge you to work with the different departments and have a capital budget out there, I guess you could say, on their ESRS funds, what their plans are, so we can strategically utilize that. I know it won't be cast in stone, but we need to have a plan. I know you have a plan on the business side, but on the other areas of what, you know, we could foresee using that, you know, such as like this. Okay, do we want to save some of that participation? Do we want to utilize some of it now for ventilation or other projects or something like that, just to, you know, beyond this school year, think down the road a little bit. That's the only comment I have about old business. Any other old business? Okay, new business, any new business?
Under new business, President Winchell, anything about the baseball field that Mr. Heenan spoke of last night, or?
Yeah, I know, I just want to follow up. Oh, Craig left. I was going to say, we did meet on the ball field that day, but there were a number of meetings afterwards that we did address some of the short-term needs, such as the infield board member, Chris Busco donated a mower for them. We cut the lip, we rolled the lip, we provided more to that. So we did address some of those short-term issues. We know it's a long-term issue. Talked with Mr. Linder, over and through the finance department, and Mr. O'Toole, the CFO, as far as identifying the timeframe on that. I don't know, Aaron, if you'd like to make any comments on that at this point.
I think the informational item to the August meeting is discussed.
Yes.
Finance is up there.
Yes. Great.
We'll discuss location.
Okay.
So committee of the whole or regular board meeting?
It'd be under the committee meeting.
Committee, the committee meeting. Okay.
Informational item.
Informational.
Okay, very good, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Or I'm sorry, yes, any other new business? Remarks, Dr. Roberts, take us off.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, President Winchell. I certainly want to start by expressing gratitude for just the recent occurrence from, and that is the questions from board members with regards to our Forecast Five, as well as our NWE agreement. One, it really pushes our thinking around, making sure that we sort of develop, specifically me, I'll take ownership of this, sort of develop the practice around running sort of these key items to a committee. And so again, we're getting better at that. I know it's an area of growth, but my commitment is to make sure that that occurs. Additionally, I certainly applaud our board members, and certainly have the benefit of having individuals with strong instructional backgrounds on the board for your continued push around how many of these resources would be beneficial to us as a district. So thank you for that push. To the members of the committee and parents who are still here this evening, thank you. Thank you all for your comments and input earlier tonight. The importance of hearing and honoring all of your voices will continue to be reiterated by myself, as well as all the members of this core team. I want to thank you all for your continued sharing of emails and your advocacy on behalf of your children, as a part of the coalition of parents that we saw well represented- of parents that we saw well represented here this evening. We truly appreciate it. I personally appreciate the input that you all are providing. You know, I believe that every parent and each family have a right to make certain determinations and decisions on behalf of their children. And please know that I remain committed to not only valuing your voice and input and your partnership as we navigate this time, but I want to make it very clear that for my own leadership constitution, I will never attempt to infringe upon or take away the rights that you all have as, as a parent to determine those medical decisions for your children. It's important to know that the district's leadership team and I will continue to look forward to balancing that right, that inalienable right that you have with the decisions that we have to make as individuals who have been appointed by you and vested to take care of your children's health, well-being, and education. We will balance that right with current and up-to-date data from the Department of Health, the CDC, as well as our local public health data. I'm hopeful that at some point, given where we're all sitting right now, that we will be able to restore the faith in the sciences in our communities. The numbers aligned to the Delta variant are shared by Dr. Lewis early this evening and Mrs. Karzik. They're not political, they're not ideological or philosophical. It is our reality. You know, my superintendent colleagues and I are acutely aware that we have an obligation to provide every single student who knocks on our doors, not only with an exemplary instructional and educational experience, but to take care of their safety. Believe me, while we may have some differences in how we view this, we are true partners in this work. Throughout the last year, we have received hundreds of letters, emails, or comments from parents of our students as you continue to advocate on behalf of your children. And we know that that advocacy is grounded in a lot of love, care, and concern for their safety and well-being, and no doubt, as we've heard tonight, for the fair treatment of each of those children. I come to you tonight with tremendous humility and ask that we, as community members, take a moment to become more informed about the policies and guidelines that are swirling around in the national, state, and local sphere. There are lots of theories out there that are not grounded in much credibility. During the past year, we've continuously enlisted your voice and will continue to do so. This practice is something that we will maintain. Your voice, your perspectives and insights will always be received and considered as we make decisions that impact your children or our students. I shared with you the last time, and I want to reiterate my ask. This is the time, because of the uncertainty, where we need to build our empathy muscles. Regardless of which side of the aisle we stand or sit, there are children watching us. They are children at the end of every single data point. While I will never ever take anything personal, one of my favorite books is titled Four Agreements, written by Don Miguel Ruiz. It's an encouraging read. But tonight, it worries me to think that as we talk about the 0.1% or so of children who've lost their lives, that they're not as important as the 99%, whose children will become part of the 0.1%. My ask as superintendent and as an invested member in this Mill Creek Township community is that we build those muscles. I will reiterate and share with you, there's a saying that was made popular by the late Archbishop Desmond Tutu, and it comes from the Zulu tribe, and the word is Ubuntu. And Ubuntu means I am because you are. It means that my humanity is connected to yours. Doesn't matter where on the aisle we sit. Every single adult, almost 900, who show up every day in this district to serve your children are doing so out of love and care. I want to encourage you to continue to send us those emails, accept our invitations to meet and talk, and show up to board meetings. We will get through this together. It is no cliche when we continue to say that we will be stronger together. We need you. We need your voice. And you certainly need our support. Let's do this by locking arms to have a great opening of school and a wildly successful year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Any other remarks from the school board members? Okay, hearing none. Just want to remind everyone that this meeting is recorded and will be on YouTube. And also can, please visit our website, www.mtsd.org for several informational items. And finally, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District, which has new pace, new posts added on a regular basis. So item eight adjournment, have a motion, please.
Motion, Janine.
You have a second?
Second, Shirley.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Motion passes. We are adjourned.